Okay, the hour of six o'clock having arrived, we will call the regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hon?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Village President, Clapfelter.
Yes, that's seven members of the Village Board present, form being established. We're going to proceed with the order of business as set within the agenda. For the record, today's date is Tuesday, April 5th of 2022. We are located at the Sherman Village Hall for this meeting, 401 St. John Drive in Sherman, Illinois. The time is 6:00 PM, it is a regular meeting. With that being said, we're going to move along in the opening to the Pledge of Allegiance. We have some specially distinguished guests, guests of honor in the chamber. So I would like to ask everybody to stand and face the flag. And the Girl Scout troop, Brownie troop, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? We'll wait for you to start, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. Okay, the next item is to set the agenda. The agenda has been posted 48 hours in advance of the meeting, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Can be no action items added to the agenda unless there are an emergency purpose of which we do not have any this evening, I believe. So, with that being said, the Chairman entertains a motion to set the agenda, is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Long makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Tim. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, guys have it, the agenda is set. Before we move along, are there any trustees seeking recognition that I would add to the agenda right now? Discussion purposes only. Okay, that's going to take us to the Clerk's report. Clerk has distributed the March 15th, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes to the Board of Trustees. Prior to this meeting, those meeting minutes are presented by Clerk Bull. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the Chairman entertains a motion to approve the March 15th, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes. Motion to that effect, Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Rockford. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hon?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
That is six members voting yes, none voting no, the minutes will be adopted and added to the Village website. The next item, item number two is the Presentation of the Bills for Approval. Again, the Administration and the Clerk has distributed the Bills for Approval prior to this meeting to the Board of Trustees. Trustees, are you seeking any clarification on any of the bills?
I just got one question, it's repair damage equipment, $2,900.
I do not know that off the top of my head.
Wasn't that the same people we paid for the women, like the whole village?
Nothing in PD, right?
Was it the playground or anything?
No. Oh, maybe game time.
That's it.
That's really not good.
Actually Clerk Bull.
Oh, yeah, I know it was.
You noticed it?
Yeah.
Sent it to me, I passed it along to Administrator Stratton. I believe that that would be the fix. It was like a Plexiglas type unit that's on one of the playground pieces, so.
Because I questioned that.
Uh, any other questions regarding the bills? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the bills for payment, motion to that effect. Trustee Long makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Gray. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hon?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no, the bills are approved, the payment will be distributed to various vendors. Next item is the Treasurers Report. That Treasurers Report is included in your Board Member Packet. There's a couple nuanced things here I need to go over. Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer Penley is in attendance for any questions that we may have. So we need to amend the December 31st Treasurers Report. I think it's a small.
Yeah, there's some cleanup in the general fund and the MFT fund, moving some of the grant revenue out of the general fund over to MFT for the American Recovery Fund. And then we also had a couple of accruals that we needed to book for sales tax and health insurance.
Everybody comfortable with that? So we will reapprove the December 31st Treasurers Report that we have already approved, just for those different items. You guys have been working with the auditors right now.
Yes.
I don't know if that's included in this audit or not, no, it's not right now. So anyway, Mr. Stratton is under the weather a little bit this evening with a sinus infection, so that's why he's not here. And it's a decent enough one because Mike misses nothing. But he was not feeling the best and didn't want to get anybody else sick, especially our young people in the audience. Okay, alright, so let's get a motion to approve the December 31st Treasurers Report, motion to that effect. Motion been made by Trustee Gray, seconded by Trustee Rockford. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hon?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no. The Treasurers Report will be adopted and this new one will be added to the website, which I believe the other one was already on there. So the other item is the January 31st Treasurers Report that's included in this, your Board Member Packet, your documents. So, any questions regarding that? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the January 31st Treasurers Report, motion to that effect. Trustee Long makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Tim. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hon?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no, the January 31st Treasurers Report is adopted and will be added to the Village website. The Village Engineers Report, we do not have the engineer here this evening, but I am working to get together with him and set a meeting to discuss one last time the Village Road Improvement Plan Project, bid process, and probably communicate with you guys one last time, but we've got to get that out and get that going and get on the schedules for the road contractors too. It's about 1.9, some odd million dollars from that bond issuance that we had done and the roads that they have identified. I am, if you know of anything, since then, since we addressed that, not saying we can make any changes right now because it's kind of pretty close to being established, but there's something that needs moved up on the list that's became a problem after this winter weather that we just came through. We need to potentially look at that and reprioritize some projects, so. With that being said, we'll move on from the Village Engineers Report. The Legal Report, anything under legal? Nothing to report. Nothing under legal, bring us to the Village Administrator and Economic Development Coordinator, I'm a pass on that. We go to the President's Report. There is one item under the President's Report, and that is a request to share in the annual sponsor, or scholarship, I'm sorry. Request to share in the annual scholarship for WHS Vocal Music Students with the Village of Williamsville. Total would be $500, split 50/50 with the Village of Williamsville, so $250. Are you all comfortable with appropriating $250 for that purpose? Okay, so let's get a motion to, not to exceed $250, or to distribute $250 to WHS Vocal Music Students. There are motion to that effect. Trustee Rockford makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Tim. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hon?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no, that motion is adopted and those dollars will be distributed. Committee and Department reports, does anybody have anything to report regarding their areas of specialty in the village? Nothing under your committee and departments? Good, that's an expeditious meeting. Sherman Police Department Chief Bangert, what do you think from the P E? Nothing?
Nothing that's already.
I'm sorry?
Nothing that's already.
Okay, so we'll move to the Sherman Emergency Management Agency, Director Michael Moes. Girls, did you hear the tornado sirens go off today?
Yeah.
Maybe Mike Moes here, who's the Director of our Emergency Management, can tell you why they went off today.
Because it was like for the test.
Yeah.
See if they work.
First Tuesday in a month, we always test the sirens, very good. And if they don't work, what do we do?
Fix that, fix it.
Definitely. Don't worry, this isn't a long list. Just a couple of things to tell you, or obviously some of you know, some of you don't. You should all have your GETS, WS, WPS, Wireless Priority Service cards that were set up for certain Board Members who would have positions or roles for continually during a disaster, specifically for those that aren't aware what those are. It's a card that's issued by the feds that allow us to bypass the priority levels in the telephone service. Both landline, GETS is landline, WPS is for wireless. And it allows, there's five levels, the president is number one, public's number five. You guys are at number four now, if you use that card. So the suggestion is always remember to carry it with you. It's a credit card, there's a little wallet ID that was with it, gives you instructions. And you're more than welcome to test if you want to. Question, this, I know I got the email about that, but I haven't received a card. Do you have it? Okay, I don't think I got a card either. I got a card a long, long time ago. Right, and they are, I don't think, let's see, I'll double check, but all I can do on you guys is just update it for WPS. So the card you have now should be good. I never had a card. Okay, I will double check. I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure I had a card a long time ago. Do you have it still? Well, I'm going to have to go look. Okay, I know right where to look, if I have it, so. Well, just let me know and then we'll order you a new one, that's not a problem, everything's done electronically. Jay, I'll check in there. Basically it was mayor, Mayor Quotem, backup Mayor Quotem, secretary, and a department head. That, you know, because obviously you need to be able to meet with them, I'm not sure in most times. Just a reminder, in regards to cyber, we're getting a lot of, Craig and I are both getting a lot of warnings about what's going out there in regards to cyber, both at the professional level and in your office for the village and personal. So just keep an eye on what's coming in, don't trust everything, just slow down and check the address that you have, that you know where it's coming from. If you're not sure, the best thing to do is call a person up and say, did you have done a spec? Or did you send us an email? Yep, he knows why I'm calling. And then the last thing to mention is with the announcement that Bruce is going to be retiring, we are in the process of discussing procedures and processes to transition from him doing the work for the generator and cyber maintenance to alternate means, whether within the village or outside, in that sense. And I've got one other thing to mention would be that I started trading up against all my volunteers. I now have four volunteers, potentially five, that will be in and about, and once that's all finalized, I'll introduce them later, in that sense. Any questions for the other? Questions?
Thank you, sir. Sherman Public Works has been announced that they're not in attendance, we did not meet them at this meeting. That would bring us to new business, of which there is no new business. We were only to old business, and there is no old business. That takes us to the item listed on the agenda here, which is civic organizations. We have one civic organization that is in attendance and will be addressing the Village Board. So reading it into the record would be Sherman Brownie Troop 6085 for a presentation. I would ask Michelle to please come forward and tell us, just a couple of words, what you're, what's going on? And then, do you have some spokespeople for the troop that would like to present to the Village Board as well?
I sure do.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna film y'all, so.
Of course, the girls have to do a big action project as part of their bad work, and they have to find a new community, and they have found one, has to do with the new bike path. So I'm gonna let our girls come up and present, I think there are three there doing a speech. Do you want to come pull this line up? I don't know where you want to lean, Sam.
We can stand on a chair, Miss Natalie.
Here, I can come pick her up.
Come out from up, you guys can go in front of us.
I just want to give her a hug a bit.
There you go.
Oh, my girls. Does Amy need to do it?
Hello, today we are going to share a community service project. The Girl Scout Troop 6085 wants to do a, to help the environment and our community. If we get permission to do this project, we will make up.
Pick up trash.
And plant Illinois wildflowers along with the new trail. Our true plans to make posters to recruit volunteers. We will use trash wrappers, wagons, and trucks to pick up and haul away trash. We have reached our wildflowers that are native to Illinois, so we are buying some seeds. Farewell, city boy.
Do you want to tell them why? What we discovered when we went on the bike path?
A bunch of trash.
Do you want to show them the pictures? Show them the pictures and describe some of the trash that we saw.
Uh, we saw, uh, we didn't take a picture, but we saw an old boat motor, uh, we saw a. Broken fence. Yeah, and we saw parts of shed, a shed.
So we saw a lot of trash, it's visible when they're, it's less visible when, uh. No, leaves are gone, when the leaves are gone and the foliage, foliage is there, it's less visible, but we noticed that it kind of was distracted. It wasn't, you know, very nice to look at, I'm assuming it's from the landowners or whoever was there prior. So, um, we thought that it would be a good project to try and get all this cleaned up. It's pretty close when we walk in, so you can kind of see it right away. So we thought it's kind of a big job because there's a, there's a lot of big, big items. So what do we need to help from the village besides permission, what does it need help from?
We need trucks and dumpsters.
But all the, all the trash.
Guys have any questions?
When would you need the dumpster?
Well, we thought we would ask you guys when, like, a good weekend to do the, to do it would be. Because we're pretty, you know.
So you would want it for, for the weekend?
Probably like a day, I'm guessing it's like, you know, a day, and we, we probably get volunteer, we post about it, where will we post about it?
Some social media.
Some social media, try to get volunteers, that kind of thing.
Place it in the parking lot and then maybe just put the trash. Will they ask you for any assistance at all?
I guess, do you need assistance? I think we just get volunteers, we could just get the, a place for it to go, all the trash, it is big, there are all the items. I know that cleanup day is on the seventh, so I didn't know if you wanted to try to coordinate around that, part of that, or, you know. But part of the project is they have to do some of these that is going to be law class, so that's why we wanted to pack some of the wildflowers.
Thank you, girls.
Board Members, do you have any questions of Brownie Troop 6085?
I think this is great because I walk my dog a lot and I think I've trashed along the way, a lot of trash. People just throw it, I don't understand why.
Do you guys want to say something about the dog? What else we wanted to see if it would be possible? Hey, Lonnie? Come up here. Tell them what we saw along the way. When did we see it up, on the path, when we went there? Right.
What's my dog?
What would be a good idea to have at the beginning of the trail, do you remember what we talked about?
Um, like the trash can, we used to.
Or a bag, a bag dispenser for like dog waste, maybe, at the beginning of the trail.
Duri, it's, it's amazing.
And it's native to Illinois.
What kind of flowers do they throw back every year? No?
Oh, that one's a perennial.
Where is that exactly, I mean, can we get a dumpster there? You know, that's on the, or did you get, or did you get, but how are you going to get the stuff from there? Yeah, that's.
Plus, I, you would definitely need, like you said, wagons. Wagons, yeah, like we have a garden wagon, I'm sure we have.
We can get that four wheeler from the social place.
And a lot of it's like garbage and stuff, like lots of. Some of it, yeah, it's just random, there's tires, there are tires there, so I'm obviously going to have special.
There's glass.
Lots of, there's a lot of, lots of stuff.
So, let's, let's come up with this, let's take a vote, the Village Board's going to take a vote and see if they will support this project. And then, let me throw a couple of items out here for you to consider, so let's think about this. When we do this project, since there is a cleanup day that's coming up in the very near future, and Trustee Tim is in charge of that, and he usually, I think you do, maybe you don't anymore, but Trustee Tim usually arranges for dumpsters on that day. He could potentially coordinate with the garbage hauling company that we use to arrange for another dumpster to be placed somewhere in that area, in the parking lot, to make it easier on you. If there is a dad that has access to a tractor, a trailer, or ATV, that can haul a trailer, I'm sure we could work with our police department for authorizing some use of a motorized vehicle on the car path, off and out of the way if people are using it, obviously. What else would I say? The dog waste issue, we would like to request that you all reach out to Greenhaven Animal Clinic. It's Green. Greenhaven, they changed their name, basically, yeah, so now it's Greenhaven.
I could probably shift some light on that for Trevor, because Mike had mentioned to me that he's already kind of secured a donation from him for that purpose.
Right, that's what I was getting, yeah, so, so Mr. Stratton had told me that Greenhaven is very interested in putting stations out there with bags on it, similar to we have at the park. So it would be awesome if the Girl Scout Troop 6085 reached out to them and tried to partner with them in some respects, and, you know, maybe some social media, and they would like your assistance. And you could meet the individuals that run Greenhaven, and it could be a partnership between the village, one of its businesses, Greenhaven Animal Clinic, and Girl Scout Troop 6085. So, let's all move forward together as a team, what's that? Brownie Troop. What'd I say? Oh, thanks. Mrs. Mayor. So how about this, the Chairman entertains a motion to appropriate a set amount of dollars. We'll leave it open ended for the rental of a dumpster and a few other items to partner with Brownie Troop 6085.
Finally, you actually could.
And to complete a project along the new Williamsville to Sherman bike trail and planting some wildflowers, native to Illinois. Ranging from the dumpster, working with Greenhaven. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Hon. Clerk, let's have you call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hon?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz? Trustee Tim?
Yes.
And since this measure has received a majority vote of the Village Board of Trustees, the mayor is allowed to vote on the prevailing side, or is in tie, but since it's received a unanimous vote, it allows the Village President to vote on the prevailing side, of which I, the Village President, would like to be recorded as voting yes. So, girls, that is seven members, unanimous vote of the Village Board supporting the project, and we look forward to you moving forward and beautifying the new bike trail and cleaning up our town. So thank you for all of your hard love in advance, and thank you for everything you're doing for the community. Good job tonight.
Thank you. You're welcome, thank you.
I think all the questions you, you had dumpsters that were written down. It's a good point, people love stuff like that when that one's. Three hours. Well, the dumpster right there.
Okay, so there's no executive session this evening, but we do have the public comment period. And, okay, we do have two individuals who've signed in to speak and address the board. Mrs. Sammy Walden is here to address the board under Board Policy. Obviously, you already know this, but three, I mean, three minutes to address the board. So, the floor is yours, and you have a few extra seconds, go ahead and start while I have the timer.
Okay, first I wanted to ask about limb pickup, because it's supposed to be picked up today in the yard. So it is on the calendar, on the website, but the limbs have been picked up five, and the.
Okay, we'll check into that.
When it's supposed to be picked up.
It might have been where, sometimes they get so, they're so busy all day long, they don't get the time to. If they don't, they usually get it the next day.
Well, yeah, yeah, here you go, the, the dump site where it's at, with this amount of rain, they can't get access to that without getting stuck and running it up and everything like that. So when this dries out, then they'll get out and get around and pick them up.
It might be a while.
Yeah.
The rain has had.
Right.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to know is if there has been any new developments regarding the dog breedings going on?
I don't have anything from my knowledge, but that's done at the administrative level, with Mr. Stratton being absolutely seeming to his sinus infection, I don't, I don't have anything to report, so we can find out. I mean, we can communicate with Mike and see what's going on.
Alright, then, I sent an email to all of you after talking with Mike about the whole situation, and he stated that I needed to lobby my board members. And so I sent an email to everybody, but I only, and I sent it as a return receipt. I only got a return receipt from Mr. Schultz, so I didn't know if any of you, us of you even had read it. So I sent a hard copy to your address, your home address, and again, I got no reply. But, um, in the, with the dog food situation along the trail, that was one of the things I included in my email, was that I think that there needs to be an ordinance about people cleaning up, not only on their dog on a walk, but in their own yard as well, to keep the stench from getting so bad in the hot summer. So, and that was included in, that was the only thing I, I suggested adding to the petition that I had already gotten signatures for. And I've got several pages of signatures from that month, year ago. And, um, the breeder is still licensed to breed until June 30th of 2022. Now, you know, she said she wasn't breeding anymore, but there was supposed to be an inspection done after that meeting, and I haven't heard anything about what the outcome of that inspection was, or what the, what an update is. But, um, I, and I also put in the email that there are numerous things in subdivision covenants that specifically relate to this, that it's supposed to be for pet only, not for commercial use. And some even, there were, I think there was one that actually even said, um, no more than a certain number of. no more than a certain number of, most of them just said, oh, Britain Place subdivision says no more than three domestic dogs and five domestic cats. But the others don't say a specific number, but they do say, you know, just for pet purposes, not for commercial purposes. So I really believe that the village needs to have an ordinance to support what is in covenants so that we can do more to, you know, prevent this kind of thing from happening again. Cause it could happen in any subdivision, including anyone you live in. So that's my view.
Okay. Let's, let, let us get with Mr. Stratton because he's been handling it at the administrative level. I don't have a lot to report to you, honestly. Because I don't.
But cleaning up the dog feces, I mean, there is an ordinance about trash, you know, and how it can be a smell and how it can attract rodents and all that. But there's nothing in the ordinance about feces. And trust me, I can't be in my backyard in the hot summer because the stink is so bad. And people come to my house and they're, they immediately notice the smell. So something really needs to be done about it.
Okay. All right, well, not to cut you off, I'm sorry, it's just the, the policy is what it is. I'm giving you probably a whole fair screw in it. But we'll get with Mr. Stratton and see where it's at with me and legal. I know there's a lot of, you know, there's opposition and pushback from your neighbor. And two sides to every story. So it's, once you get into that situation, it changes the dynamics of all things, so.
Okay, well, ten dogs, a person's probably, I think, a little much.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Next individual, Mrs. Sarah Rodrick is here to address the board.
I'm here, my capacity is the Sherman Area issue with Congress President.
I wish you would have told me that, I would put you under civic organizations.
Haven't seen a lot of you since Queen of Hearts was over and saw some of you every Thursday for quite a while. I'm just here to remind you that we have the Easter egg hunt coming up this Saturday before Easter. Seems like it's going very well. I've acquired quite a few, $1,400 in donations from my businesses that are part of the chamber and still expecting more to help offset the costs of some of the things we're purchasing, such as the bikes and baskets and things like that. So we're trying to make it a, so that it doesn't cut into either one of our budgets, so that it's offset by sponsors. The other thing that's happening is we have a golf outing coming up on May 19th. That is, besides the Queen of Hearts, is our biggest fundraiser. And so I hope all of you golfers will come out and maybe get a couple of teams together. It is something that I'm really looking forward to. Some of the funds that we are using, we have some co-op advertising that is gonna be done on the TV for our businesses and really looking forward to promoting our local businesses and being able to do that with the funds that we have raised with Queen of Hearts and the golf outing. So just coming out to ask your support for both of those events coming up and we'll see you out there.
Excellent. We probably could put a team or two teams together.
I thought you could.
I know there's a couple golfers on this board. By a couple, I mean, I think there's at least six, seven. Seven?
Two teams.
There's two teams. Absolutely, I think we can find a, another one for, for the second team. All right. Well, that brings us to the adjournment resolution. Does anybody else have anything before we close up the meeting?
Yeah, I'm gonna piggyback on it. So we've got the Easter egg hunt coming up. It's a village and chamber event. We'll be a DJ. Sixteen bikes, I think, we're giving away this year. Easter baskets we haven't purchased, there's a lot of good giveaways. It'll be a good solid event. A lot of local businesses are helping, the villas are filling all the eggs and such, it's...
First time at the park, so I'm looking forward to that.
First time at the new park, yeah. Should be, should be pretty awesome.
Hopefully have some good work.
Yeah. If not, we have a backup plan. We'll have a drive-through Easter egg mabok, so.
We have some leftover items. Something, you had one?
Yeah.
From the...
Willie the Frog.
Willie the Frog. We could probably get out of my office down there and...
Okay.
Over to you. Anything else? Just a couple, few quick announcements. We're working with the entire board to get, we're gonna do some ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking after these bids go, get completed, splash pad, fencing, the new path that leads you to, from Old Tipton Estates, which actually goes all the way down to St. John's Drive. Representative Butler got us that grant in the capital budget a couple of years ago, a year and a half or two years ago that was. So that project's coming to fruition. The road overlays milling, like I spoke of earlier, that two, close to $2 million project there. Bike trail, we need to do the formal opening of that for, you know, for those purposes. That was completed in November, wasn't optimal to throw cases, shed light on it, so Cleveland is working on that. We're gonna pick a date for that and try and get everybody out there for that. What else am I forgetting? Oh, playground, kinda crazy to say, but we're actually gonna do a dedication and ribbon cutting for that because if you remember, we opened it at the back end of COVID when playgrounds could reopen up. And then we've had all these situations and the last year got away from us. So we're gonna have a ceremony there to thank carpenters union, Mr. Eric Mills, our Sherman resident who oversaw a lot of that and worked in concert with them, and some of the other individuals that donated a lot of labor and time, money, our sponsors, things like that. And then we're gonna kick off and head into our concert series and a lot of family projects and movies in the park, just lots of good things on the horizon. So I just wanna put that on the radars and say that while we're all gathered here, this meeting together. So with that being said, we're gonna have to adjourn this meeting. Let me see here. Sam, could you please come up here? Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Come to the mayor's office, come this way.
I enjoy the problems in the table.
What's that?
I follow you.
I probably should bring you up just for these purposes, get on up here. Assistant mayor, we're bringing grace to you. All the girls come on up here. Well, that was...
No, Grace, no problem.
Come around here. Ready? All right. Three of ya, who's gonna do it? You'll do one, they'll do one, and you'll do one, okay? You gonna bang that gavel? Hang on. Hold up, hold up, hold up. So the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Hold on, is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Schultz makes a motion seconded by trustee Wong. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Yikes have it, we are adjourned. Hit the gavel. All right, next. And next.